I'd like to call the community, the whole, for the Village of Cary for November 18th, 2025 to order with roll call, please.
Collier.
Here.
Dudak.
Here.
McAllpine.
Here.
Prusina.
Here.
Stefani.
Here.
Walrith.
Here.
Counting.
Uh, here. Please join me again in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Moving to public comments. The public comments is an opportunity for public to address the committee of the whole about issues not otherwise on the agenda. The committee welcomes public comment at its meetings. Each speaker is limited to a total of three minutes. Chris, did you want to talk now, or do you want to talk about something on the agenda? Well, do, I could call you up at that time. Okay? Martha Ritter, did you want to talk about something other than on the agenda?
Hello, Martha Ritter, 239 School Street. Um, is it possible to get the sweet street cleaner? The, I swear the leaves are two feet in, in front of my neighbor's house in the street. So it's gonna flood my house once again, and I already paid $3,600 to have it, because it was like a river running down our street. Because I do it in the middle. Every day I sweep it in the middle, but what good is it if you're in the middle and people on both sides have it at least this high? And apparently, I was told that it comes 12 times a year, and I said, I haven't seen it once. That's just ridiculous. And then the traffic getting out of my development is horrendous now, horrendous. It took me five minutes sitting there just to get out of there, and you're imposing more traffic? I might as well just rent a space there before I get out.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the village, uh, committee of the whole? Uh, we'll go ahead and close, uh, public comment at 6:06. Um, our first item of discussion, pardon me? Yeah, when we call the agenda item, just let me know that, what you want to talk about, okay? Do you want to just tell me now what you want to talk about?
If it's on the agenda?
Yeah, if it's on the agenda, when we talk about it, I can call you up.
Okay.
What do you, what are the things that you're looking to discuss?
The tax levy and, uh, the, the more raised things.
Okay, I'll call you up at those times. All right, thanks, Chris. Uh, first up, we have, uh, police pension fund. Uh, Kelly?
Good evening. Um, attached in everyone's packet was the police pension fund actuarial evaluation prepared by Foster &amp; Foster. And here this evening to, uh, discuss the report is Luke.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Luke Shane Hoffman. Um, I work with Foster &amp; Foster. We prepare the annual, um, actuarial evaluation for the police pension fund. Just gonna take a few minutes to go over it. Um, it's in the packet. It starts on page three.
Your page three or our page three?
Uh, your page three.
Okay.
And we can jump to page seven. It says summary at the top. Okay? Um, and on that page, um, while, while you're getting there, actually, just to, um, remind everyone or inform everyone what the purpose of this report is, um, it's just to give an overall, um, status update of the health of the pension fund, and we do that by comparing the assets, the fund assets to the liabilities, and, um, it's also to set the, our recommended contribution for the 2027 fiscal year. And on page seven there, there's a table in the middle of the page, um, the numbers in the left-hand column, those are the results for this year. It says valuation date 5/1/2025. The numbers in the right-hand column are, um, from last year, just as a comparison. And going from the top down there, starting with funded status, uh, the total actuarial accrued liability, that's the $33,786,000. Um, this represents the liability associated with, um, benefits that have been accrued to date. Below that, actuarial value of assets, $20,413,000. Um, this is not the market value. This is a, a smooth value of assets every year, um, as investment gains and losses come in. Instead of recognizing them all at once, we smooth them, um, over a five-year period, and this is just so that, um, that results in more stable and more predictable, um, contributions from the village. Below that, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, $13,372,000. Um, this is the excess of the accrued liability over the, um, the assets. And that leads to, um, below that, a funded ratio of 60.4%. And the next section there, contribution requirements, um, if you jump to the last line there, village recommended contribution, um, that's $1,518,425. Um, this is our recommended, uh, contribution that the village make to the police pension fund for, um, fiscal 2027. And as you can see, that's an increase from last year. Last year was about 1.4 million. That's about a 6.3% increase. A main reason for that, um, there's two main reasons. Um, one is that the way the unfunded liability is paid off, it's designed to, um, increase every year at the same rate that payroll increases. Um, so that increase is, uh, built into these calculations. That's something that, um, you'll see every year. Um, the other reason for the increase was that there was, uh, what we call unfavorable plan experience. Um, that means last, we took last year's, um, unfunded liability, we rolled it forward based on what, um, we think it's going to be, based on our assumptions and methods, and this year it turned out to be, um, the actual unfunded liability turned out to be higher than what we expected. So that's, um, what I mean by that. And, um, just to touch on the investment experience over the year, um, there was about a nine and a half percent, um, investment return, and on an actuarial asset basis, which is once again a five-year, um, smoothed, there was about a 7.41% return. Um, so I, I do have one item for consideration, but at this point, are there any questions or comments?
Well, at least we've breached the 60%.
Yes, yep, that's right, that's right.
It's huge. I mean, we are far above many other municipalities.
Hmm, that's, that's true, and I, I will say, I took a look at the last few years, and the village has been making, um, our recommended contribution, and that really goes a long way. So, yeah. Okay, um, so the one item I have for consideration is, um, the way that we're amortizing the unfunded liability. That's the $13 million, um, dollars I mentioned before. Um, currently, the method is to, um, amortize it such that it will, it will be paid off by 2040. And that, and you may or may not be aware, but that 2040 date comes from the Illinois Pension Code, um, where police and fire plans must be 90% funded by 2040. Uh, your plan, um, aims for 100% by 2040, so, but that's where that date comes from. And, um, that's perfectly acceptable, um, but as we start to approach that date, um, that might lead to some volatile village contributions. Um, for example, if there's a, if there's a big investment loss in, say, 2035, um, you'd only have five years to recover. So, um, something that's helped with our other clients is, instead of having a fixed end date of 2040, is to do what's called an open amortization method, where instead of, um, having that fixed 2040 date, um, let me take a step back. So, with, with the current method, we're, we're amortizing, um, this year, we amortize the unfunded liability over 16 years to 2040. Next year, whatever the unfunded liability is, we'll amortize that over 15 years, because it's one year later, and so on. Uh, with the open amortization method, instead of reducing that, um, number of years we amortize by one every year, we continuously, um, amortize the unfunded liability over 15 years. And that results in a more, a much more stable, um, contribution for the village, um, much more stable and much more predictable. However, that does push the date back that the fund will become fully funded. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect to, um, uh, eliminate your unfunded liability by 2040. Okay? And so, did that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Some things never change.
Sure. Well, I, so I, I just wanted to, um, you know, see your reaction on that, um, if, if there are any concerns with that, um, that I can address.
I have a question. What's the risk reward of doing it that way? Why not continue on the same path?
Um, great question.
Just because of the volatility? But what if there's no volatility?
Yes, what, yeah, so that's...
I know it's a what-if, I understand that, but, so if you keep spacing and you always stay at 15 years, when it gets to 2040, we have to be at 80% or 100%?
Uh, well, well...
90, sorry.
So, yeah, so the current statutory, uh, requirement is 90% by 2040. Um, that might be pushed back, so that's not, uh, too much of a concern right now. Um, I guess the, the consideration would be, if, if you're worried about the volatility, um, an open amortization method would be something to consider. If you're not too concerned about the volatility, and you really want to stick to that 2040 date, um, then there'd be no reason to change. And if, if you want to stick to that 2040 date and you're concerned about the volatility, there's a third option. It's a little more complicated, but, um, you know, like I said, I wanted to see your reactions on, on this so far.
In, in either of the cases that you talked about, current and then the 15-year, is there an assumed rate of return that you're anticipating?
Yes, yes. Um, I believe that's 7%, but let me double check. Yeah, 7%.
So obviously, if it, if we make a better return than 7, we're gonna get there quicker. If the market falls and all of a sudden you're back down to 3% returns, we're going to have a higher contribution requirement.
Yes, and that, that's true for either method.
Right, right.
Does the volatility come because all the plans are coming close to that at the same time, is what you're saying?
Um, it's, so it's, I would only focus on your, your plan. Um, the volatility comes with, uh, let's say today there were large investment losses, um, we would have 15 years to make it up. If that happens 10 years from now, you'd only have five years to make it up. Um, so, and that's, that's where the volatility comes from.
So why wouldn't you, instead of funding until 2040, go for 39 or 38 for fully funded? And then you buys yourself extra time, and you're putting a little bit more in there to cover ourselves?
Well, that money's gotta come from somewhere.
For sure. Oh, I'm, I'm with you.
Hey, if we got, if we got all the cash, we'd fund it all right now.
Yeah, oh, I'm, yeah, no, I, I hear you on that.
No, and we are, through the other, my other organizations, we are working with the state to take another look at this 2040 figure, and, you know, if, if all things are the same, and if we are successful with, um, the state pushing that out to, say, like 2050, which is more reasonable, and a lot of municipalities would prefer that, um, we could still stay to the 2040, and if something happens, then we, we, that would buy us a little bit more time. But our goal is to be 100% funded.
Are you seeing that it's leaning more that way?
Uh, they're more open to the discussion because of all the, the, the monies that are being depleted and the state's not giving us our shares on things. So, they're looking at ways for us to create different revenue from within.
So what, if we get to 2040 and we're not to the 95%, what's the...
90.
Sorry, 90, was, then what?
I don't know what the repercussions are. Um, but, you know, I think that there's a lot of municipalities out there right now that aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing.
There's a lot that aren't even gonna be close to that.
Yeah, there's, I, I know, it's through the IML, there's, there are people that are in the twenties, if that, and, uh, it's scary.
So, are we being too aggressive towards it, then?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think it's being fiscally responsible. I think we need to, you know, we have an obligation, and then I don't want to throw a wrench into these things, too. Then we have the tier-two pensions that the state is considering eliminating, and we would have to make up that delta. If that goes through, we would be responsible for making all of our tier-two pensioners up to tier-one, and that money's gotta come from somewhere. Yeah?
If you go to the 15-year plan, do you have an idea of the difference in the payment that we might make? Just a guesstimate.
Um, so, I can say that, um, next year, under either method, it would be the same because it would be the, uh, both, they would both be under 15 years. After that, it's a, it's a little difficult to say, but overall, under the 15-year open method, um, that would result in a lower village contribution. Um, it would start slightly lower, and then as the years went on, that difference would be, um, slightly bigger and bigger.
And can you, uh, make the switch every year when we go through this planning process to go from one method to the other?
Um, I'm not sure I follow, so...
So right now, we're on the, we're gonna be done at 2040.
Mm-hmm.
You've given us the option of this 15-year, which we may or may not be done at 2040.
Sure.
Right? So let's make the assumption that, um, three or four years into it, our investment goals haven't been hit, because we had a lot of years where the investment goals weren't even close. Um, so let's say that they weren't hit, then, um, how do you, you know, can we switch back to the, we want to be at the 2040 goal again at that point, because we've got a, maybe a bigger, you know, bigger pot that we have to make up?
Sure. Um, I mean, our methods can always be changed, so, um, I'm, I know that was just a hypothetical example, but if, if it were the case that investments weren't being hit, um, in that case, I would recommend a, a change to the assumed, uh, investment return, but I, I, like I said, I know that was a, a hypothetical example.
And converse is true. If, if all of a sudden, the rate of return is much higher than 7, and it starts smoothing out, and we're coming in at 8%, then we're gonna fund it fully before even 2040, if nothing ever changed.
Correct.
So it's, it's, that's why we look at this every year, right?
Right.
To kind of look at it and say, do we need to make a change? Where are we? Do we stay the course?
I do just want to point out also that I, I can't remember, it was probably like four or five years ago, we did make a change in the assumed, uh, investment rate of return, uh, as well, and lowered it to that 7%, because I believe it was at either 7.75 or 7.25, but we did reduce that.
It was 7.25, yeah.
And didn't we also, aren't we, don't we have enough money in the fund now that we're in more aggressive funds as well? And we had a certain amount that we had to have before we could diversify our investments, maybe like four or five years ago? I seem to remember that.
So, I can...
It, it's inconsequential. I just, I think that we, we had to crack a certain amount of money in it before we could start being more diversified in some of our more aggressive in our investment portfolio.
That may have been the case a few years ago.
Yeah.
But actually, a few years ago, all police pension fund assets were consolidated into the, um, IPOPF, the Illinois Police Officers Pension Investment Fund. Um, so they do all the investing. Um, so they, they, well, given the size of that fund, it's, there's many different diversified, um, options, so.
Good. Continue.
Um, well, so I, I guess, what I, what I'd like to know is...
Turner Euler has a question for you.
Oh, sure, sure.
I just had a quick question about the numbers that, that you're addressing. If you're concerned about volatility, that the potential for volatility in any particular year, if our current plan is to fund fully by 2040, haven't we already built in a significant cushion for our legal compliance at 90%? So if we experience volatility, we're aiming at 100%, even if we experience volatility, isn't there a huge cushion already?
Yes.
Since we're, we only have to target 90% to be legally compliant?
Yes, that, there is a cushion there. Um, the volatility is mainly for, um, the village. So if, if that volatility is not something that the village wants to, um, take on, um, that's why I'm, I'm not recommending, uh, that you switch to this method. I'm just, if, if the volatility is something that the village does not want to take on, then I would recommend the open amortization method. If the village is perfectly fine with handling that, then I would have no issue not, making no change. So it, it's really, um, something for you to consider. Um, so if, if you want to stick to that 2040 date, no change. Um, but like I said, if, if you're not comfortable with that volatility in, in later years, I would consider, um, changing this method.
Any other questions?
So, so for clarification, is the direction from the committee that we're comfortable staying with the current process and plan?
Yes.
Not switching to the open amortization?
Yes.
Stay the course. Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Kelly, you're up again, our beloved tax levy. Chris, do you want to ask your question now, or do you want to wait till after, uh, the presentation for the tax levy?
No, I'll wait.
Okay.
I'll wait until afterwards.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I prepared a memo that was in the packet for everybody, uh, kind of their analysis of what the last three years have been and what we're recommending, uh, this evening in terms of the tax levy. Um, up on the screen right now for everybody is just a reminder of what the distribution of property tax dollars is. So these are the percentages, you get a tax bill, the percentages, um, of those dollars that go to each of these taxing bodies. Um, they're fiscal 26. This came right from our budget presentation that we did in April. Um, just a reminder of what our revenue categories are in the general fund, um, with our largest piece of that being property taxes, and then our second piece being the state taxes. Uh, over the last 10 years, um, our property tax levy, uh, has gone from, you know, 2017, where we won a few years with no increases, uh, the last four years have captured new growth and CPI, which under PTEL, uh, is what the Village of Cary as a non-home rule municipality is, uh, limited to. Uh, for fiscal 27, put together a comparison of where we're at for our fiscal 26 budget versus what we're anticipating for fiscal 27. Obviously, these are very rough numbers, um, as we're getting into our budget process later in the year. Um, our fixed costs, so our hard costs that we have in the general fund, obviously personnel and benefits, uh, being the two largest ones, our professional services, so those are things like our insurance, our CCOM operations, our legal fees, our accounting fees. Um, and then as Luke from Foster &amp; Foster, uh, just went over our police pension contribution. Um, so our total estimated increases just in these categories for our general fund, we're estimating about $426,000 of hard costs from this year to next fiscal year. Finance is recommending, over on the far right, um, that we capture, again, as we have in the last four years, uh, CPI new growth. This year CPI is 2.9%, so trending downwards from those last few years. Uh, last year was 3.4%, and then new growth, which was minimal this year. Uh, that would be a recommended increase in the tax levy of $91,618, uh, which, as you can see from the prior slide, our police pension contribution is $89,000 difference from 2024 to 2025. So truly, or 20, sorry, yes, 24 to 25. Um, so truly, that is, uh, the majority of what this increase would be covering with a slight amount left over for our general fund. Um, I do want to stress as well, as you can see, uh, in that bottom column or the bottom row, the tax rate, uh, 2024 tax rate was .4263. Our recommended, um, amount that we would like to see, uh, that tax rate would actually decrease to .4058%. Our EAV from 2024 to 2025 increased about eight and a half percent, uh, with the limited amount in new growth and the CPI trending downwards, uh, this actually reduces the tax rate. So there is a, a slight, uh, tax reduction in the tax bills.
Extremely important.
It's very important, so...
Put your microphone, please.
Tax rate from 2024 to 2025, in any of the scenarios, uh, has decreased slightly. That is because of the level of EAV growth from 2024 to 2025, which actually results in a, uh, lower tax rate for, uh, 2025 tax year compared to 2024. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So the rate will still be lower even with the increase of 91,000?
Correct.
As it was last year?
Correct. It was also last year.
And the, the last year, it's, yes.
Yes.
So the rate is actually going down.
Correct.
And then, you gotta remember, too, I just had this conversation with trustee Prusina, all of our expenses continue to rise, and with the additional, just our labor is almost half a million dollars in, in, in the one year, plus all the other expenses that we have. To, to capture the $91,618 is real, I mean, it's, obviously, it's 20% of it, of what we're, what we're looking for, but we're still able to reduce our tax rate to try to come up with, because now it's Kelly's magic wand that she's got to wave to make sure that we can fit all of these things that, through the CIP and all these things, and how we're able to, to get this. Now, we, we're very fiscally sound. We're, we're responsible, uh, at, at some point to where our headcount is really low. We need to look at ways that we can better services for our residents and, and our businesses. You know, this, what the, the big storm that we just had come through here, really kind of focused a little bit on how we, we need a little bit more help in, in, in the house to help us get through some of these things. And we had to bring on contractors. We had to bring on these things, you know, to, to help us stay, uh, ahead of the game, to give the valued service. So when you're looking at, uh, an increase like this that actually lowers the rate, it's, it's actually tolerable, and it's something that we could, uh, we're, we're being responsible for it.
Can I ask another question?
No.
Brian, where was the new growth from? Or what was it?
Not much.
I see that, but I'm asking, was that TIF district? Was it TIF?
No, this is outside the TIF. So this is just general growth for, uh, billing permits that were issued or additions to existing homes. Uh, there was not a lot of new growth in the last, uh, calendar year. Uh, the previous year is when, uh, the Westlake subdivision was completed, so all that new growth was captured in last year's, um, levy. This year, there was not a lot of new activity that occurred.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Like, what's on the books right now, like, we have, um, next year will, will be better. We'll have a, you know, a year, a year or two, especially with, uh, we just had a, the groundbreaking for, um, Cary's, the, the new Alden, which was, it's gonna be really good. I mean, that's, that's gonna help us out a little bit, too, with no, little or no impact on our services.
So just so that the average, um, resident understands and what we're saying here, just to make sure, Kelly, that we're relaying this properly in layman's terms, is that if they look at their portion of their tax bill that is attributed to the Village of Cary, that should go down a little bit.
That is correct.
Okay.
And just another thing, I, I like pointing out when we look at this, when you look at your tax bill, the Village of Cary has two line items on the tax bill. One is, that goes to our operations, that's the general fund. That is where we spend our operating money. The other goes directly to police pension. So that police pension is already paid for by property taxes, and then we're also going to be contributing an additional $1.5 million to that fund. So it, it's not like we, we have a big cash grab here. You know, when you look at what value of services that we provide to our, our residents and our businesses, for, when you're looking at the tax bill, for roughly 2.5%, uh, I think that we're, we're doing a really, really good job, and that's something that we should be proud of, that we're able to, to maintain the service level that we have with relying very little on, on tax dollars. There any other questions? Chris, oh, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a, just a bigger picture comment about, um, both of the items that we are discussing, or have discussed, one, and now we're need deep into this one. Um, I think we have to, for next year, have some dialogue about this sooner. Um, in my mind, the police pension fund monies that we put in, we're probably putting in more than we need to, considering other demands on our dollars. I, I'm, I'm fairly confident that the way the state of Illinois runs, that's gonna be extended, and it's gonna be extended before too much longer. Um, so, to me, when I look at $89,712 going into the police pension fund, and I listen to people that have come here, discussed Maplewood, and then more recently, the extension in New Haven, I look at that dollar and I say, that's a patrolman that we probably could use on streets that may or may not get more traffic. Um, and it's a way to fund a patrolman. So, to me, I think strategically, um, I would like to have more discussion sooner about how we'll handle this next year. And do we, do we, again, just, you know, sort of willy-nilly, because that's the way it's happened in all the years I've been on the board. Whenever we've had the discussion about the police pension fund, you know, the returns, generally speaking, haven't been what we projected. Whenever we've had the discussion about the police pension fund, you know, the returns generally speaking haven't been what we projected. We've had this focus on twenty forty and it's like, we'll find the money and we'll continue to stay down that path. Well, there's going to come a time when we may not find that money and I think we have to plan for that sort of thing. This village is going to look a little different in a couple of years with Maplewood and with New Haven extension. And we're probably going to need more staff, may need more patrol people and then we'll all be looking at each other and go, how do we fund those things? So um, again, just some thoughts.
Yeah, well, I don't think, you know, I don't think that we, we do things, n- nilly-willy, as you said, I think that there's.
That's the way that, that's the way that the um.
Well, I think that our hands are tied on a lot of these different things, but I think this is a great conversation to have during our budget workshop to figure out, you know, when we could peel away, so if, if that's the direction of the board, they want to peel away some money that is, is going towards the police pension. But you know, I think that we're on a, a positive course with getting to that point and we are working behind the scenes with the state to try to get that extended. Now, if that gets extended, if we have the resources to, to keep doing it, would be great to have that completely funded, we don't have to worry about that anymore.
True.
But if this money can be diverted towards other things and, you know, even before we, you know, our headcount is down probably thirty percent, I, since, we'll say twenty thirteen, would you, was, was that a good number to come up with Kelly, probably? So, I mean, we're doing a lot more with less, which means that we're stressing out a little bit. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're providing what, what we need, there are some holes that we need to fill. Finally, after all these years, we're fully staffed at the police department. It took years, years to get there.
Then Pat decides to leave us.
It took him all this time and now he's going to retire, he's got a complete staff. But you know, uh, th- these are things that, you know, are concerning, that, you know, we want to be, you know, provide top-notch services, but we also want to keep our overhead. We've enjoyed the fact that we have very low overhead, when you look at other municipalities, we are really lucky that, you know, we built this beautiful new building on time, under budget, without a tax increase, that says a lot.
But that's the past.
I know.
You know, as leaders, you have to look at the future. And I think that the public would say that if you got a ninety thousand dollar increase to the police pension fund, what did I see out of that? Nothing. They, they get no benefit out of that, that is to, to fund a pension fund. What do they get out of ninety thousand if it goes into the general fund? They could see something happening, even if it's just one additional staff. So I, again, it's just bigger picture.
Well, yeah, I know, but when, when you're adding staff, that's perennial, I mean, it, it doesn't go away.
They might need it.
Yeah, we, we, I think that we will need it, yeah.
Which is one of the reasons I think we've gone to the strategic long-term planning, where we're doing five years out. We're not doing one year, I, I agree with you, we have to plan long-term to say, hey, what is this, what's going to be coming down the road so that we, doesn't come out of the blue? And we need two more staff members, you know, we need something like that, so we're, I think that's one of the things that we changed a couple of years ago with our budget process, was to do, yes, the CIP, but also just more long-term planning. And I, I think you bring up a very valid point that we, we need to be very cognizant of that, so that we don't get behind the eight ball on it.
As you know, and Mayor, you know as well, I have always voted for the maximum. Never have I said anything other than that, so I'm a proponent of it. Again, I want to just be clear, we just put ninety thousand in the pension fund, ninety thousand that we can't use for something else.
Right, I, I get it, there's, when you look at the amount of money that we put towards, no offense to our police department, I love every single one of them, they do a remarkable job. And we're, we're thrilled that we have a, a really great agency, but it's expensive and we've got to find ways that we can creatively fund these things. Trustee Walrath?
Uh, two, two comments, number one, yes, this is a topic that definitely should be brought up in the budget discussion because that's where it belongs. Number two, and I'll address this directly, what the public, what the residents are getting for that extra ninety thousand dollars is us not being fiscal morons. Because, as the mayor has stated and the actual, as everybody has said, we are well ahead of the game. So we're building a nest egg so that we aren't sitting at twenty thirty-eight, twenty forty, twenty forty-five, saying we're twenty-five or thirty percent funded and whatever is going on at the state at that time, they decide that you have to be ninety percent and we're sitting behind a five million dollar number that we have to go out to some massive debt to put on the residents because at some point in the past, we decided that we were saving too much. So I like the path we're on. I would agree that when there are future funds coming from these additional developments that'll come in new growth, that is the time to address any additional needs that we might have. And I bring this up repeatedly, the vast majority of the money that we take in goes out in police force, as it should, that's our main function. That may be where we address it, but backing off on future debt reduction obligations, if I'm double paying my mortgage to get my house paid down quicker and things are going a little bit better, I'm not going to pull back on that and just start spending it because I seem to be doing okay. I want to reach the end goal of the plan, whether it's twenty thirty-eight, twenty forty, twenty forty-two, ahead of the other municipalities. So that we have done our job fiscally responsibly and then we can move on to the next thing that the state will hand our way that we'll have to deal with.
Yes, and they, and I mean, you know, this is a, I'm so glad that you brought this up, Rick, I think it's important that we have this and it's, it's perfect to have. Maybe Kelly can make a mental note during budget workshop that we can uh, kind of talk about it. You know, because I don't want to get into, you know, the LGDF debacle that we're dealing with right now. I mean, the state owes us money and it, they can take money at any, any time and we have no control over that. And they do, and they continuously withhold funds from us. So, you know, that's, that's our job, other mayors that we, we work on, working with our legislators and the governor uh, to, to make sure that we're made whole. But all, if, if all things were great and we were given the ten percent uh, LGDF that we're responsible, that we're supposed to have, instead of the six percent, we would be in a little bit better position to have some of the things that we need and that we, that we've had to cut back over the years. So I, 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 I get what you're saying, or I think that it's an important conversation to have and I'm glad that we will put it in the um, budget workshop.
How much are they yours?
Well, if you do, if you do the math, um, with all the, the monies that they've, do you have a rough number? I, I believe it's, I, I thi- I did the calculation before because all the, we, we had to bring, because we had to make a presentation to the governor about how much it's cost. I think we are out probably close to fifteen million dollars.
We had this, we, we actually brought this up, I want to say it's been about three years ago now and we actually got the number, so I'm sure it's increased since then.
Right, that's why I was asking.
It was like twelve million dollars.
So Mark, you're around there with our chance of seeing any lick of that money?
Uh, well, our, our goal right now with the way, the, the funding is through the state and their budget crisis that they're in right now is we're just trying to hold on to what we have. We, we have, you know, we've told uh, President Harmon and we've told the Speaker Welch that if we can continue with what we have, our goal is ten percent. We are, that is not going away, our goal is to get that, but it would be a win in the current budget crisis that's going on right now with the state to maintain what we have right now, because at any time they can come and say, we're, we're going to take this. And that would be a catastrophic, catastrophic loss for the Village of Cary. So anyway, on a better note, uh, any, uh, Chris, you had a question regarding uh, pension, or uh, come on up to the microphone, you had a question about the levy?
First off, will there, will there be any kind of tax levy at this point?
What do you mean?
That the city is gonna ask for, like the school district, they'll pa- they want to pass a tax levy, so they'll, they'll put this in the paper. Is that something that, that you will ever come back, I mean, you may say something now, but then a couple of months or so, it'll be in the paper that you want to pass a tax levy?
Well, that's what we're, that's our, what's the whole purpose of this conversation, we're looking, if you look at the, the, behind me, look at this graphic, we're talking about that yellow portion, that's the only part of your tax dollar that we get. Is that fa- roughly five percent? We're contemplating right now, uh, if we're going to take the new growth, which is minimal, and the CPI, which is uh, not as much either, it's, it's gone down, it's gone down to two point nine. So to increase our, the, the levy is like three million dollars, to increase the three million dollars by another ninety thousand dollars, that's what we're contemplating right now.
Okay.
But that ninety thousand dollars, you really won't see.
No, I.
It'll be your, actually, your tax bill on our portion. We get this question a lot, we, we get a lot of people saying that we need to lower our taxes for our schools and, well, you're at the wrong board meeting, you're talking to the wrong person. So we're responsible for that five percent, so when you look at the three point one million dollars, we're looking at adding an additional ninety thousand to that.
We, no, I was at the meeting with Dr. Wade and Mr. Shepherd and that, that tax they increased was for infrastructure. Well, they said there wasn't going to be another tax increase, well, obviously you saw, you saw that they lied. My next question is, okay, when that storm came through, you declared a.
State emergency.
Yes. Now, the permits are being issued, but they're not, be- because um, we're, I, I, I guess, where is that? When people apply for a permit, normally you're supposed to, like, to put windows or a roof in, it costs, I don't know, a hundred or whatever.
Permit fees.
Where is that, I know that's, you waived the fee. Now, is that something you're going to get, look to get back from the state?
No.
Or is that just?
No, I don't think so, because we did not reach the goal, the state, uh, in order for us to start even getting uh, monies returned to us, we had to reach twenty-five million dollars and we did not, from, for the state of Illinois.
So that, where does that money?
The federal threshold.
Where does that money come out of?
That's, that, this is, this, this goes to our general fund. This is only one part of, Kelly, can, or can you go back to that screen?
But I mean, that permit money, however much that, like a hundred bucks to get a permit for the roof. So I mean, is that money you have set aside to?
No, we just absorbed that as a courtesy to the residents that suffered a catastrophe, that's just what we do. You know, it's uh, it saves, you know, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars for, you know, it depends on it, if you get a roof or a fence or a siding, windows, all those are all different permits and that's, you know, we're trying to work with our residents, we know it's a hardship and people are going to have to spend a lot of money to get these things done. So the board had some compassion and, you know, I, I agree, we went with the right direction, we've done it in the past when we've had issues of devastation in the community and it's, it's worked out well. So that would, that, if you're looking to ask, are we losing revenue from that, yes, we are. But it's for a good cause, it's not like we're, to quote trustee Dudek, willy-nilly about throwing our, 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 our funding away from that. So that's, if you look at this, like the licensing, the finance and all these different fines and things that come into what, what we're paying, that's where all of our money comes from.
Okay.
So the, the ninety thousand dollars that we are looking to ask for, for more, if, the plain and simple it is asking for a tax increase, but the average taxpayer won't notice any type of increase, actually your, our tax rate is going down.
Okay, okay, because I, I looked at that and I didn't quite understand, it looked like it was going to be possibly going up to like three point five or four percent in kind of looking at that. So. Okay, thank you.
It is a little counterintuitive.
It is, it, it, you know, it, I appreciate you asking the questions, it, it's uh, taxation, especially when it comes to a levy is, is very uh, it's, it's mind-boggling.
But, but it's also something we have to do every year, so we have to go over the levy every year and decide what we're going to do with it.
And so then, my next question is, where does the committee uh, stand on the, the ask here? Staff is recommending that we do uh, what we've done for the last three or four years is capture the new growth and the CPI. Need a consensus?
I think it's minimal enough to, to say we should capture both.
Yeah.
I agree.
I know, Dudek, you're thinking about it, right? And we've always, we've always aligned on these things, it's, it's an important ask, it's something that you, you don't take very lightly, it's whenever you ask for something different. But when you're looking at the, the monetary here, it's the, the average taxpayer won't notice anything, actually their bill on our portion will go down. Okay, you have some direction on that? Thank you, Kelly, for that. I'm, I'm going to move up uh, for operating um, procedure here, I'm going to move E up to next of discussion on a partnership agreement with Cary-Goveria Chamber of Commerce for the twenty twenty-six Cary Main Street Fest, if that's okay with everybody, have that discussion. Um, who's going to take this? Oh.
Good evening, Village Board and Mayor. Uh, tonight before the Village Board, we're going to be discussing uh, the twenty twenty-five Cary Main Street Fest and also discussing the future Cary Main Street Fest, which many of you attended. Uh, as you guys all recall, uh, we extended Cary Main Street Fest from a two-day, a Saturday, Sunday to a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And unfortunately, this year, uh, Luke Bryan decided to visit one of our neighboring communities, which took a lot of attendance and then also on Saturday, uh, there was about four hours of intermittent rain uh, during some of our prime-time band performances.
I hope we got a discount.
So on, on the screen here, uh, you'll see all the activities and, and attractions that took place uh, earlier this year. In the top left, you could see the two new uh, activities and attractions on Sunday. Uh, we had a Cary Main Street Fest five K, which was very well-attended, we had over a hundred racers uh, attend that race. And then also the community breakfast, thank you to the fire district over there for assisting and putting that together. Uh, it was really well-attended and really well, well-received from the community. We also changed the farmer's market from the family area that you saw this year to Main Street. And then we had the car show, which was all the winners from each week, uh, that debuted their cars there. Bags tournament, food truck, I believe we had over nine food trucks, actually on Saturday, uh, the Polish food truck sold out around seven o'clock. Uh, so we had to escort them out and they're very happy with the attendance. And then of course, live music, some great bands that attended, uh, some great performers, so appreciate that.
Most were good bands.
Uh, singo, trio, trivia, and then the family area, which had over seventeen vendors there. So as the board knows, we have, each year we budget twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, that's the village's direct cost and our commitment uh, to the Main Street Fest in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, who also contributes twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, you could see the direct costs, which was what we actually spent this year, uh, so it's a little bit over the budgeted amount, uh, but we also included an additional day, which was Friday night. Adding that additional night also increased our insurance rates and liability coverage, so slight increase from what we budgeted. Uh, that third row that you see there includes, uh, something that we did this year was try to keep track of some of our staff time uh, between public works and the police department. So this number here, the twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, includes our equipment hours uh, that we use for the trucks and the, the skid loaders, the forklifts to move equipment around. Also includes our public work staff and police officers. Uh, so it's a estimated number, but it's a, a pretty close and accurate. And then in total, you could see the total cost, including our budgeted amounts, our commitment, and then our indirect costs come, came out to fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
And just add one more direct cost that was different from the previous year, the family area was expanded, so that also included the addition of a second-stage rental. That was also a factor in the uh, uh, subtly higher above-budget cost.
Thank you, Eric. Here you could see the overall financial summary between the Chamber of Commerce and the Village of Cary. Uh, we show here in each column twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. The first row uh, covers our income, which is sponsorships, participation fees, the food trucks, vendors to participate. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, there's sixty thousand, sixty-three thousand dollars in revenue and then twenty twenty-five, slight increase to seventy-six thousand. And then you could see in the second row, our total expenses, again, slight increase, that covers our bands, our insurance and then other operations to run the event. And then you could see the net profit, uh, so slight decrease, but we also did add in another day, which takes on additional expenses. And it's just important to keep in mind that each year that we put on this fest, our, our main goal is to have zero cost. And uh, that just helps us to continue to provide these events for the community. This table shows our beverage sales, that trustee Collier was very uh, impart of that, uh, running that on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so we appreciate you volunteering. Uh, again, showing the difference between the years in twenty-four, twenty- Again, showing the difference between the years in twenty four, twenty five, and then the last row is the difference. Of course, on twenty twenty four, we didn't have it on Friday night, so you could see the nine thousand dollar increase. And keep in mind that Friday is when Luke Bryan was performing in the neighboring community. Saturday, you could see with the two day only in twenty twenty four is very well attended. You know, that was the main night to go out for twenty twenty four. And then twenty twenty five, slight decrease to sixteen thousand in revenue. But keep in mind, we had rain during some of our main performances. So I bet you we'd probably be up to twenty one, twenty two, maybe even close to twenty five thousand if we didn't have that rain and weather. And then you could see in Sunday that there's a slight decrease there. Maybe people were just tired from Friday and Saturday and didn't come out as much that day. And then this is the last slide of the presentation. We've already working with the chamber, depending on if the Village Board wants to move forward with the three day event again. We did pick a date for September twenty fifth through the twenty seventh. We really wanna get to the point where other communities are working around our schedule for Cary Main Street Fest and not us working around their schedule. So trying to schedule this weekend, we had to look at what the McHenry Fest puts together, the homecoming for Cary Grove and all the other events that go on. So we wanna what we're recommending to the board is to continue on with the three days. We think it was a great success and it would be nice to see a year to year running the Friday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We also wanna continue with our twenty five thousand dollar budgeted amount. We spoke with the chamber and we are gonna look at removing the stage from the family area, which can save some monies and also think of different ways to save other additional expenses. And yeah, so we would like to move forward again with the three day event. And I'm here for any questions?
Anybody got any feedback, questions?
Yeah, a quick question. The money that we made ahead that split, does that roll over into this or is that going to general fund?
That would that would just roll over into our our next one.
Next one. So we.
So instead of needing twenty five thousand, if we already have twelve, take that off. You need nineteen thousand, start off the next year.
Correct, and those dollars go right back into the chamber cut a check to the village for those dollars that goes right into then capital where the Main Street Fest is expensive.
But based on labor and all that, we didn't make. I understand that there was a profit to be split, but based on the numbers that you just showed, it showed that we had a twenty one thousand dollar deficit. That would help cover that, right?
Remember, those are indirect costs. That's just labor.
We're paying for it anyway, yeah. We're paying that anyway.
But but I think.
We call it in kind services.
I think Anthony's looking at saying if you took that out of it, there would be a profit, but I think there would be. I think you're looking at it was confusing that one if you go back two slides, the fifty thousand, but you go back two more, I think. Here. So really, the cost were the twenty nine, if you added twenty nine and twenty one together, that's the fifty one, three fifty, of which we put in twenty five.
Right.
They put in twenty five. And then if you look at the profitability, it took off. I I think we still counted that in there, did we not?
Yeah, so essentially that that twenty nine thousand, which was the direct cost, we profited between the two agencies, twelve thousand, which would be a six thousand. So we received our check for thirty six thousand, give or take. We profited six thousand.
Yeah, it was thirty five, three seventy five.
Thirty five, thank you.
So is there the direction from this committee to move forward with this event for next year?
Yes.
I love the event. The Sunday numbers were a little bit concerning to me. And also, understanding that alcohol sales are our number one source of income for this. And also knowing that we've got a couple additional great bar restaurants coming into our entertainment district. There is a concern, you know, that our pool of drinkers, so to speak, could get smaller and smaller if they go into some of these new restaurants, which I'm sure we encourage them to do. Just something to be cognizant of. I don't know if maybe taking a Friday, Saturday approach, focusing on the two stronger days and taking the events that existed on Sunday and see, I know space is sort of of the essence down there, but if we could incorporate those events into Friday and Saturday somehow to just sort of consolidate and cut the losses on on Sunday. It's not gonna get any easier with with the opening of of more and more bars and restaurants down there. You know, I love the event and I definitely wanna do it, not just because I had a great time playing there. But it it's fun. We get we get to see all our friends and family, they come out, everyone's having a great time. It was extremely positive. For me, I don't know, Sunday could just sort of revert back to our farmer's market and that could be what's going on on Sunday. I did also enjoy the fire department breakfast. Thanks, gentlemen. Maybe just seeing if there's a possibility of consolidating some of those Sunday events into the other two days. To me, that kinda makes sense and I would worry that. I I think we still have another year where we're gonna be okay in in terms of profitability. But going further and further, if we get more and more interest in our downtown area, more businesses opening, it's gonna, you know, the pie is gonna get sliced up a lot more and we we could stand to maybe not see as good a numbers.
To to that extent, though, and if we cut Sunday out, what is that? The insurance would go cheaper, stage rental would go cheaper.
That part, I'm sorry to interrupt, a reminder that the stage rental would not get cheaper because of the fact that it's deployed and set up and they won't come back on a Sunday to retrieve it. So it's we're gonna have to pay for it to be picked up on Sunday evening or Monday regardless. So the cost savings, unfortunately, then that cost is is not big.
And then I would take it as long as it's set up, we have to have insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think that we need to look at expanding some of the different things that we offer on a Sunday. There are other opportunities to do that. And actually, can I ask the chief of the Fire Protection District to come up here? I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
On the hot seat.
No, they're all good. It's all good. I just wanted to know from your perspective, how do you think that that the family breakfast went? Is that something that you liked or is that something you'd like to continue to do? What's your feedback?
It was larger than we expected. We had over two hundred individuals come and eat, so it was really well received. We had fun doing it and interacting with the individuals and I think it was a good good program.
So you're in for next year? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And and I I think that every year that the chamber and the village do look at this and analyze things like the the family area, I can tell you, we had tons of people, more people that wanted to be in there, but there wasn't room cuz we had put up the stage and we had done different things. There might be different things we can do, you know, with that, how do we how do we change that up a little bit? But I did like the idea of the farmer's market coming down there on Sunday. You know, kind of the music that was playing there was a little bit more Sunday brunch music and some of the family, more family oriented, but not not a family area any longer on Sunday. So I I think there's ways to improve upon it, but I I think it's a I think it's a great way to showcase Cary and to get known for something like this. You know, you hear of other places that do a rib fest or they do this, this, and that. You know, we have a nice little Main Street Fest going and I'd like to just build upon it and get it better and better.
I'd like to toss out an idea that the local businesses that are selling alcoholic beverages. Sorry. The businesses that are selling alcoholic beverages during that timeframe should buy in. Cuz I think it's a it's a privilege. Yeah.
That's a hard one to say because it's on public, I don't think we can force anybody to do that, but.
Well, it's our rule, they could. Yes, I would agree.
I I think that that we can achieve that same goal through engaging with them, particularly to trustee Percinus' point of there'll be a couple more players in the field. But we have to define representatives of the village and this board need to define with the chamber ahead of time what it is we're gonna offer. Because the folks who already have their business downtown at that time of year, they don't need us. They're gonna they're gonna call that that place is gonna be full. It's a Sunday and there's football and it's gonna be full no matter what. So they don't need us. So for us to go to them and say, we need something from you, there's gotta be an ROI for them. There's gotta be a reason, whether that's a, you know, Bloody Mary contest and they get X. I don't I don't know. I'll leave it to the creative types to come up with it. We've gotta find a way to engage those. And you can sit down in a small room, it's it's five people, you know, get all five in a room.
Yeah, we had talked about talked to sitting him down, talking about how we can help them, how they can help us, just engage them in a conversation. That this is something that benefits the entire community.
Second piece is make sure that you charge them the same price or lower than they are. That'll take care of the beer sales.
Yeah, that's.
Good luck with that one.
Okay, so I think we got a thumbs up. You got direction on that? Moving to the next item is a community plaza, community depot plaza use policy discussion. Nick, you handling this too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Before the Village Board tonight, we're gonna be discussing the community plaza use policy. As you all are aware, the depot plaza or community plaza began construction this spring and is set to be completed this following spring. So we are looking forward to it. There's been great progression there. But with progression, we started receiving inquiries from other businesses. There's gonna be future inquiries from Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts to do fundraising efforts there. The Park District lemonade stands. So in preparation for that, we thought it'd be a good time to bring this forward to the Village Board to discuss. Here's a brief agenda, gonna talk through some regulations to consider. Similar regulations that the board considered back in February of twenty twenty four regarding the shelter at Cary Lake at Rotary Park. These regulations are some things that you'll have to keep in mind if we do wanna put forth some type of rental agreement or policy. Then I'll cover a staff recommendation to the board and then some discussion. So a lot of these regulations were, like I mentioned, were considered when you guys were all discussing the pavilion at Rotary Park. Some things to keep in mind are reservation and approval processes, fees, capacity, alcohol, food, decoration and signage. The the main difference between the community plaza and the shelter is mostly location, being located in the downtown district, next to the metro, next to other restaurants and eateries. You know, the pavilion over at the Cary Lake is more secluded and and away from the public eye and vehicle or traffic and pedestrians. So the most the most important thing to keep in mind is if we do wanna consider any type of rental policy or use policy, we have to keep all these items in mind. So staff completed a lot of research, researching other communities, our neighboring communities, had a great conversation with the city of Woodstock and how they handle the Woodstock Square regarding rentals and and if they allow it open to the public. And they don't necessarily have a process in place, but the city of Woodstock's themselves put on over a hundred ten special events with other special agencies, local agencies, partnerships with the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the Park District. So you could see here in the staff recommendation, I have three points here and we are recommending to allow only special events approved by the village for local non for profits, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Chamber of Commerce, other local agencies such as the Park District, library, school districts, and the fire district, of course. And then the rental or reservation of the community plaza is not intended for private use. This will keep it from if you're out there enjoying a cocktail from the container bar and you're not being bombarded by a solicitor trying to get your roof repaired. We're trying to avoid that process there, at least staff is recommending that to the board for consideration. And then this rental or reservation process would be going through the community development temporary event permit process. So I quickly went through a lot of things, but I mostly wanted to hear what the Village Board thinks about staff's recommendation and what your thoughts are regarding the use of the community plaza.
Any comments?
Go back to the recommendation slide, please. So when you're talking about Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, chambers, et cetera, are you gonna allow them to sell alcohol as part of it or are we gonna encourage them not to and use local vendors downtown?
I believe through the temporary event permit process, there is an option for to sell alcohol. Believe that's what I saw, cuz I remember with the Cary Hill House, they went through that similar process, but I think you have to hold a liquor license.
So it could be considered on a case by case basis for each individual event that is considered for.
By staff considered?
Staff and or the Village Board, depending on the process is set up.
And if they don't have a liquor license, wouldn't we have to issue a temporary liquor license?
Yeah, I do that for the Park District all the time.
For special events.
For special events, yeah. There's criteria they have to meet.
Yeah.
Nobody under twenty one can be there and that whole thing, serious.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking because it's a public space.
Yeah.
My comments are that I I like the recommendations. I think that we start off with this route. Obviously, I think we're gonna have some other non for profits that would like to come in and utilize it as well that we haven't named it here. But I think the idea of what we're looking to do, I I think of things like, I wanna make sure things like the high school has availability if they have a jazz combo that wants to come and do play on a Friday night. Has a something like that where we can get some of our local talent out there as well. But yeah, I think we do need to have a process set up so that it's it's not, we're gonna we're gonna be using your word all all night tonight now, Rick. We're not gonna have it willy nilly. We need to have it organized in such a way that we can we can manage it so we know who's coming in there, who's coming out there, that you don't have conflicts of someone thinking, hey, I wanted to, you know, have a jam session here and I can't come there cuz someone else is there. Or, you know, I've seen things where in Crystal Lake, well, there you could do things where an event comes, a a non for profit comes and wants to do an event on Alzheimer's or or something of that nature. There's a lot of different opportunities to be able to use this plaza, I think, in a in a great way for our community.
I agree, but so what say we're on a Wednesday night and nobody's in their rental? Anybody can go in there, I understand that, but what's stopping them from playing music or doing something like that? Nothing?
I don't think that's.
Is that an issue or not an issue?
I think that a permit would supersede any private, just somebody walking in. If there was somebody, you know, had a permit to use it.
Right, I understand that, but what if what if they don't is what I'm saying.
We have pertinent ordinances, just like if somebody's walking down the sidewalk blaring music from a personal device. There's different ordinances. There's anything from loitering to public nuisance, so I I don't need it to to. I think where you're going anywhere, Dale, is is do we need to have something spelled out of what you can't do? That becomes a lot, it's increasingly difficult. And I think this is a public space, just like a sidewalk, until it's rented out. I think we need to treat it as.
Well, you gotta remember the spirit in which we we brought this to do is community. We want people to come hang out downtown, get something from Uncle Jerry's and go sit down and have dinner. Maybe if somebody having music on a on a Wednesday night or something. That's the spirit in which we were investing in this downtown to give people more of an opportunity to come and hang out. It's gonna be part of our social district, so we will, you know, we will have the container bar there as well as, you know, people can bring other alcohol from other liquor license holders in the downtown. And not only not only about alcohol, but it's about food, getting people that they can carry out food. And again, that could be like we have our al fresco alley. It's a delivery point. It's a, you know, DoorDash point where people can have food brought to them and enjoy the downtown. And it's also gonna capture a lot of notoriety from people on on metro. So we really wanna make sure that we're we're showcasing it in 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 an organized fashion. I think that it's important to keep that spirit of why we decided to to make good on this thing that we've been talking about for many years, if it ever gets done. Did I say that out loud?
So somebody that that owned a local bakery that sells out of their home right now, they can't come down there and set up without a permit or we're not allowing them at all to do that?
Not at all, yeah. It would be like just setting up on a sidewalk. You just can't set up shop on a sidewalk. Well, this is why we wanna have some something in writing that we could enforce, that the chief will be happy that we're enforcing something, right? Something is enforceable, I should say.
Easily enforceable, but remember that amplified amplified music requires approval from the village administrator or is designated.
So that would be part of the permit process for somebody wants to do like a jazz ensemble or an orchestra or a little mini concert or something, you know? I I think that giving the youth of our community an opportunity to come in and show them what it's like to be part of a municipal process that they have to go to Village Hall, fill out a form, they wanna do this, this is the day they wanna do it, and we'll allow something like that.
And we're not planning on charging for this, are we? Is there a fee for this?
I I wasn't even I wasn't thinking that we'd.
I don't believe there's any fees for the temporary event permit process, just the approval.
Perfect.
Again, we wanna drive the community downtown. We wanna make sure that people come and hang out, find something to do, enjoy the the local establishments that we have downtown. And, you know, it'll showcase what we're we're able to do. So so is everybody in agreement? Do you like the staff recommendations? Any any changes to this or any additions?
I like it, I'm for it, but just one question, do we charge for Rotary Park?
It's a whole different thing, it's a park and a big pavilion with a fireplace.
We, we don't charge, it would be the same process with an event that was held at Rotary Park, but we do charge for the private, personal use of the pavilion and the reservation there.
Different.
I, I think it's a good starting point, and we can also, if we need to make adjustments, but I think that if we see other communities that are using this, like Woodstock and their square, I think it's great to not have to reinvent the wheel and start it off this route, and we can always revisit it if we need to change something.
Can you, the road there, is that Metro property? Who owns that entrance road there?
Along, along the extension from Spring Street?
Quite a complicated...
I think we own part of it, Metro owns part of it, the UP owns part of it, and the Trax owns part of it.
Actually, recently, well, since I've been here, the Village acquired the parcel where the station once stood from the rail, from the railroad, and then adjacent to that parcel that we now own where the plaza is being constructed, part of that drive aisle is owned by us and also by the parcel with the Trax Bar and Grill.
So can we close that? If we wanted to, for an event?
Yeah, and we have, well, as you saw with Carey Main Street Fest, that was done in that same regard, we just need to coordinate with the bank and with the Trax Bar and Grill.
Because, I mean, the way I view it, the way I've thought about it for a long time is it's really an extension of El Fresco Alley. And it probably more than double the space, wouldn't it? Between the two, and there are times when I think everybody here has experienced, a lot of people in a relatively small area where it'd be nice to be able to spread out and not have to worry about cars, that's the reason I asked about.
I would imagine for larger events, we could do that.
Yeah, because then I think you, you know, to your point of wanting to get people downtown, there's a certain sense of safety when things are closed off and, you know, you can bring your kids and stuff like that, you don't have to worry about somebody getting that way.
Well, like, a perfect example is during cruise night, this would be a great opportunity for, to extension of, for cruise night.
I, I like the idea, I like the organizations you've listed, that have been listed. This is a big investment, and it's one that, you know, I think we're going to be really proud of when it's done. I'd only suggest that we walk instead of run. I'd rather delay going crazy with the use and see how it all sort of shakes out before we just open it.
So are you good with what's being presented here from staff?
Yeah, I've already said that.
Okay, all right, perfect. Dale?
Anthony?
All right, you got that direction. Now it's showcase time. A discussion on electric microability, micro mobility devices.
Before you go on, can I ask you something?
Sure.
It, it's, it's all great about what you want to do down there, but are you gonna leave porta potties down there, or, because if, like, you got these restaurants that are down there, and if they're not eating or anything inside, I mean, where are these people gonna, I mean, are you gonna have porta potties or something down there for them?
Sure.
Obviously, like we mentioned, the idea would be to go on a case-by-case basis as a group would like to reserve or use the plaza, they would submit an application for the event, and then we would see the parameters, the scale, the, what would go on there. And depending on what the event was, they may or may not need or desire separate restrooms. So that all on case, case-by-case basis. As you can see, when we have cruise nights each week in the summertime, or the farmers, or the cruise, I'll say with cruise night, there, there's not separate porta potties. When we had Main Street Fest come in, we, we do have separate porta potties because of the scale of the event. So again, case-by-case basis, we will look at that.
But I mean, let's say, like you said, I mean, you have different, say you have something going on, the Boy Scouts, or something going on one day and something going on one day and, you know, just varies. I mean, if it's gonna generate a, you know, one day it's gonna generate, let's say 50 people and the next day it's gonna, I mean, are you gonna have, offer porta potties, or is that whoever's gonna have the event, is that something that they're gonna have to pay for, or how is that?
Again, all case-by-case with the, with the event application. So a good example is the Rotary Club had the Beer Festival at Carey Lake at Rotary Park a few years ago. They had that event and they supplied their own porta potties with that event. That's not something the Village did because they were the ones running the event. So the same thing would apply here. So those factors would be considered, that's why we have and are encouraging to the committee here a, an event permit process, so we can factor all those ideas and impacts into the review of it. We've got you covered.
Chief, you have this?
Chief and I are going to take...
It's going to be a collaborative effort between myself and the village administrator.
You start.
We're going to give Nick a break, get some water for a sec. So yes, I am going to start us off and the chief is gonna carry it home on the topic of electric micro mobility devices, which I will explain what that means just in a second. This item was asked to be brought before a committee discussion by the Board because of some concerns that I think we've seen externally throughout the country, let alone the Chicago area, and also locally. You see some examples of the news coverage just from the Chicago Tribune and ABC News Seven, just of the issues that other suburbs are having with e-bikes and the e-scooters in particular. Just so we're kind of getting on the same page with the definitions and the terms that we're talking about here, when I say electric micro mobility device, that's hard to say, sorry, I'm referring to the small electric power devices that are assigned for individual transport. Those include the examples shown on the screen here, things like the self-balancing boards or hoverboards is a brand name that you might come to mind, electric skateboards, one of the newer ones are electric unicycles on the top right. Also, the more common ones, the e-bicycles and e-scooters on the middle and bottom right. And then segways are also one of the more established devices that are out there. And then a new term that, it's not a defined term in state statute, but it's more of a buzzword that's being used in the, the industry and in the government space right now is e-moto. What that is, is that's an electric micro mobility device with an electric motor over 750 watts. So it's something that is beyond what is defined by statute as a Class 1 to or 3 e-bicycle, and definitely has a significantly, significantly different speed capability and power capability. So some of those concerns and regulatory challenges that were mentioned in those news articles I showed earlier are shown here, things that we will be discussing tonight and with our direction that we're seeking, will hopefully address the concerns that are out there with regards to high speeds of some of the devices that are out there, like the e-motos. Rider behavior, particularly with the more inexperienced riders, jumping down the list there, that occur when they're using the devices, whether it's on sidewalks, on paths or on the street. Pedestrian safety, which, again, when those devices are used in areas that are cohabited by pedestrians, the interaction that occurs can sometimes be positive, like a normal experience if a cyclist was driving by on a regular bike, but sometimes they can be of more concern and more danger if there is more high speed or reckless behavior on those devices. And then obviously, the last one would be visibility of those devices when sharing the road with motor vehicles. Some of them are much smaller scale and lower to the ground and are harder to see the users when they are interacting with traffic. On the regulatory side, one of the biggest challenges is the inconsistencies that occur between towns. So this recent state legislation, this does allow local agencies to enact regulations specific to e-bicycles and e-scooters, and that's something that the chief and I will go over in more detail later in the presentation. But what's occurred, though, is that from one town to another, and even from one agency to another, within a single town, you're seeing inconsistent requirements and rules. One example, I believe, is with, that received some media attention, was between two communities in the northwest suburbs where one community has a helmet requirement and the other one doesn't. And on the flip side, one community had a driver's license requirement for these devices and the other one didn't. So when you went on a path from one town to the next, and sometimes that, kind of like in Carey, sometimes the boundaries will sawtooth back and forth, you could actually be on one path but leave and change jurisdictions three times, have three different rules that you may not be aware of. So that's something that is occurring now, and one of the things that we're recommending that if local regulations are enacted, that we do try and apply some consistency so it's easier to enforce, and it also is fair for the user and for the other agencies like the Park District and the Conservation District. We also want to make sure that we don't have any conflicts with state law, so the new regulations do allow us to enact requirements at least equal to or stricter than the state laws, so we can't be less strict. Rider education is a big challenge, that's one of the reasons why in our recent roundtable discussion with our local neighboring agencies, we did have the school districts involved, because they're, I think, in our opinion, one of the more valuable tools to educate the young riders, especially on where these things should be used and how they should be used safely. The chief can go into later some of the enforcement challenges that are, that occur with these. One example is, you might notice, there's three classes of e-bikes, let alone the unregulated e-motos. A lot of times, it's hard to tell what class and what type of bicycle it is just at the naked eye. Really comes down to being able to spot a very specific label that's on the frame of the bicycle, which if you're a police officer, either parked in a vehicle or driving in a vehicle, it's near impossible to see on a bicycle as it's moving by. And then the last challenge that was raised to our attention by the Fire District was the potential for higher risk with battery fires, just making sure that as these devices become more prevalent, if they are parked, for example, and utilized by students, the recommendation is to not have those parking areas immediately adjacent to a building or maybe give some separation, because when those fires do occur from the, the batteries themselves, they can be of a little more intensity, get out of my lane here, but a bigger challenge that we want to make sure we're aware of. Mentioned the inconsistencies with the overlapping jurisdictions. On this map here, you'll see that we just highlighted some of the overlap we have just in Carey. So in, in Carey's boundaries itself, we have the overlap of Park District facilities with trails and sidewalks that could be used by these devices and then go immediately onto a Village right-of-way sidewalk, road or path. We have county highways, we have state highways, we have township highways, we have Conservation District properties with their own trail systems, and the schools themselves have sidewalks and some trails as well. The map here is from our community GIS, the lines in purple are what we're calling multi-use paths, so those are shared trails that can be used by pedestrians, cyclists or other mobility devices, but are alongside a roadway and a road right-of-way. And then what we're calling park trails are not necessarily just in parks, but are trails and paths of similar configuration but are not adjacent to a roadway. So those are found in both public property like Carey Lake and Rotary Park, also Park District property, examples like inside Hoffman Park and the Community Trail from Ross and Bridge Road over to Silver Lake Road, and then also maybe prototypical park trails themselves, like what's inside the Hollows or the Felpro Conservation Area. And of course, our extensive sidewalk network that's shown in black there. And as you can see, there's already, and many of you know, a lot of very excellent opportu, opportunities for outdoor recreation and destinations that riders of e-bicycles and e-scooters in particular would likely be using those devices to travel to, places like the shopping areas along Route 14 to our vast network of parks and paths, to transit opportunities, the metro station here in downtown Carey, as well as visiting our neighboring communities, downtown Fox River Grove is accessible by the sidewalk along the Route 14 Bridge. And then, again, relating to the different types of regulations that are occurring from different communities, this is just maybe not a comprehensive list, but a pretty substantial list of towns that have already enacted local regulations, not so many in McHenry County, but many of them in the north, northwest and west suburbs. Again, those regulations can vary in terms of where they're allowed to be used. Some towns have complete bans of e-scooters and e-bicycles on any public property, whether it be road right-of-way, sidewalks, paths, parks, parking lots, et cetera, or some towns allow them everywhere, or some towns allow them only on certain types of facilities. So you'll see some of those options as we go further in the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the chief to talk about the actual definitions and regulations that currently exist.
Yeah, and a lot of these things exist in the Illinois Vehicle Code, and as the village administrator indicated before, there's three classifications of electric bicycles, they're all less than 750 watts, but the first two classes do not require any special criteria in regards to their use, but the third class, Class 3, requires that the operator has to be 13, 16 years of age or older. None of these can be operated on a sidewalk, that's a provision that is found in the Illinois Vehicle Code. So when we start talking about where you can use these, they can't be used on roadways with, that are posted 35 miles an hour or greater. So the village administrator just indicated that sidewalk between Fox River Grove and Carey, and when we get into our discussions here, we'll talk about, these can't be used technically on that sidewalk unless we call it something else, but it was specifically built to address an issue that, you know, occurred, I think, a decade ago in regards to an individual that was riding a bicycle to Fox River Grove and was killed on Route 14. So that's kind of a dilemma that we have there in regards to a conflict between the Illinois Vehicle Code and that walkway or publicway use. I think, the other thing is, as the village administrator indicated before, that that small label that's over on the lower right-hand corner is that designation in regards to what class the bicycle is. It's either Class 1, Class 2 or Class 3, there's only one way to read that, and as if the bicycle stopped, you can't necessarily tell the difference from, you know, the exterior of the bike as it's going by. Next, I guess, next slide. The low-speed electric scooters, just something to, that's not on here, is that it can only be used by one person. So I've seen the scooters used and two people on the scooters, the Illinois Vehicle Code prohibits more than one person on the scooters. But the other part of this equation, and this is very important when we start getting into the other regulations, and a kind of a chart that we have, is that the electric scooter use has to be authorized by the municipal body that has jurisdiction. So when we start talking about when they can be used, we have a chart that indicates that it can be used in certain areas, but only if that is authorized by the Village Board. The other part of this is that the operators of the low-speed electric scooters have to be 18 years of age or older. So anyone that's under 18 years of age cannot operate these electric scooters, and the other part of this is the, it does not require a driver's license, there is provisions as it relates to, if you're driving impaired, you can't drive impaired, and the maximum speed for electric, low-speed electric scooter is 10 miles an hour. And again, these can't be used on roadways posted in excess of 35 miles an hour or greater, so that would rule out Route 14. This is, I like the definition only because it's very interesting as it relates to, you could call it a segue, but the Illinois Vehicle Code defines it as a self-balancing two, non-tandem-wheeled device. So, and again, these devices can only, can't, cannot travel more than 15 miles an hour, but if they're operated on a sidewalk, and they can be operated on a sidewalk, the maximum speed is eight miles an hour. And they can be operated on a sidewalk and they have all the rights that are subject to a pedestrian, as is true with some of the bicycle use as well. These are a bane of our existence in terms of the electric, what they are, are in essence a motorcycle, but we asked our legal counsel in regards to a opinion as it relates to these, and if they're operated on the roadway, they require a driver's license, liability, insurance, vehicle registration, and they have to conform to the Illinois Vehicle Code as it relates to equipment requirements. When we start talking about the Conservation District regulations, they have seen where there's a kit that you can put on these e-motos or, you know, the self-propelled electric motorcycles to make it look like they have pedals on it, but they don't do anything because in the... because in the Conservation District's regulations, you have to have pedals on it to use it or trails. But these cannot be operated on a sidewalk, these can't be operated on a street unless they're properly licensed and used by somebody that has proper classification or driver's license. And then there's everything else. And that's what the e-motos or these electric motorcycles fall into in addition to the electric skateboards and the unicycles and the self-balancing boards or hoverboards. And when we met with the other bodies that we have kind of overlapping or concurrent jurisdiction with, I had identified some of the current House bills that were proposed as they relate to bicycles. And House Bill 1875 was a provision where anyone that's over 18 years of age can treat a stop, if you're riding a bicycle, you can treat a stop sign as a yield sign, so you wouldn't have to stop at a stop sign. That didn't come out of, that was, I think, assigned to rules, but I know that this next provision is near and dear to the mayor's heart, is Senate Bill 2111. That was the Senate bill that had the NIDA, NIDA Board legislation, but it also had the, what they call in Idaho, stop, this treating, you know, bicycles treating a stop sign as a yield sign, and that's just waiting for the governor's signature. So that will be law, and that'll be part of the Illinois Vehicle Code. They've included e-bike in the definition of bicycles in our Illinois Vehicle Code, so that's already been accomplished. The next two requiring riders of e-bikes and e-scooters to report injury in fatal crashes did not become law, and neither did the requirement for someone that would require a driver's license to ride an e-bike on a public roadway. House Bill 4159 tried to repeal the, including e-bike in the definition of bicycle, but it didn't pass. And then there was a House bill that was put forward that would provide a rebate if you purchased an electric bike that was mostly, I think, targeted toward the city of Chicago, but that didn't become law as well. But I think what we're trying to say here is that this is kind of fluid, and there will be more legislation that's put forward in the next session of the Illinois Legislature to address these devices, you know, the e-scooters and e-bicycles.
Now, getting back into the potential policy solutions, there's a couple of resources out there that we're aware of, and many communities that have enacted regulations have utilized and leaned upon. The Act of Transportation Alliance is one of them, and then another in particular is Ride Illinois, who has created their own guidance for municipalities and worked together with the City of Raleigh Meadows on a model ordinance. So their guidance shows here in this graph, it's complicated, and I'll go more into this, the village's version of this, but essentially it, the columns are the different locations where you might utilize one of these devices, and then the rows are the different classes and different types of devices themselves. So the green checks are where those are permitted to be used, the reds are where they're suggesting they should not be used. This is guidance, mind you, not regulatory from this group. And then the yellow question mark is where they suggest it could be either way, but only after what they consider judicious discussion by the governing body, which is what we're here tonight doing. Outreach and education, we mentioned with the school districts, is going to be very key in our opinion in terms of when we, or if we regulate these devices, getting the word out to the users, and especially at the level with children. Just some examples of outreach, my hometown of the village of Vernon Hills has a very good park district outreach there, and then the chief shared an example from Cook County Forest Preserve as well.
And these are the provisions that McHenry County Conservation District has enacted to address the use of the e-bicycles on their trails, and what they elected to do is they elected to regulate them not by means of necessarily classification, but by means of speed limit. And that kind of makes sense in regards to the vehicle code, because you already have speed regulations as they relate to the segways and, well, the segways in regards to how their maximum speeds and how fast you could use them on a sidewalk. And in this particular instance, the micro-mobility devices can only be, can only travel 50 miles an hour on the Conservation District trails, and then the, everything else, basically in regards to the scooters and unicycles, can only go 10 miles an hour. But they all have to have fully functional pedals, and that's what we were talking about before in regards to those electric motorcycles that they had seen, that were trying to pass the e-motorcycle off as e-bike. And then everything else over 750 watts would be prohibited, as well as anything that was gasoline-powered. And again, this is, that issue as it relates to where we can, the bicycles and e-bikes can be used, and as you can see, specifically, the e-bikes cannot be used on sidewalks. That's the Illinois Vehicle Code. The low-speed scooters, as I indicated before, can only be used in these particular, you know, on trails or sidewalks or the business districts if it's allowed by the governing municipal body. And then the segways can be used on sidewalks, but they're limited to eight miles an hour, and they can be used on other areas as well. And there's kind of the, everything else that's not identified in the Illinois Vehicle Code couldn't be used on our public roadways or the sidewalks.
So this gives a good summary of where we are currently, and obviously, the intent of tonight is then to have a discussion on the committee's feedback and desires of where we could or should be looking at regulation-wise.
Yeah, this is a, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. This was the, kind of the talking points we used when we had all of the bodies, you know, the overlapping bodies with jurisdiction in our, it was actually on Halloween, by the way, that we all met, and these were some of the concerns that we addressed when we discussed the use of these e-scooters and e-bicycles. But one of the concerns that I had that was kind of paramount was that there would be some type of parental responsibility, and interestingly enough, when I started researching this, not only is that found in our municipal code, but it's also found in the Illinois Vehicle Code, and they're basically identical, and it says that the parent or guardian of any child shall not authorize or knowingly permit any child to violate any of the provisions of this chapter, either the municipal code chapter or the Illinois Vehicle Code. But we did discuss all these other issues, and I think the bottom line or the consensus was that there is a lot of confusion in regards to these devices, number one. Number two, a lot of the ordinances that have been passed by other municipalities kind of overlap on the Illinois Vehicle Code, and that would be something that, you know, we'd be very cognizant of because we don't want to run counter to the Illinois Vehicle Code, but we can be more restrictive, we just can't be less restrictive. So when we start talking about the use of the e-bikes on the sidewalk that's between Fox River Grove and Cary, that's not something that we could say, yeah, but you can use them there because that's specifically prohibited by the Illinois Vehicle Code.
So as we continue the discussion and start getting the feedback from the committee, we'll go back to the slide. But before we do that, the chief and I will show you at least an example of the areas kind of building off that initial table that showed where we currently stand regulation-wise. We're going to show you areas where you could consider some changes and some suggestions as well. So I apologize, this is a very busy, colorful slide. If it induces a, oh, anyway.
Many, many colors.
You want to start us off, chief?
Sure. Bicycles, for example, right now, our municipal code prohibits the use of bicycles on sidewalks in our business districts, but we have, I think, five business districts, or some, we have multiple business districts. And they run along Route 14, but you don't want bicycles, scooters, e-bikes to use Route 14, so it makes sense that bicycles and scooters would be able to use the sidewalks. But again, the e-bikes would be prohibited from using the sidewalks because they're prohibited by the Illinois Vehicle Code. And then it does make sense, instead of trying to regulate by class to regulate the speed of the device so that it's operated in a safe manner. But regardless of this, and I think this is something that's going to probably be a concern of some residents, is that no matter what, electric scooters cannot be operated by anyone under the age of 18, because that's what the Illinois Vehicle Code says. So, you know, we would probably require that they would be prohibited for use on the sidewalks in the, at least the downtown business district, but maybe allowed between, on sidewalks that are adjacent to, like Route 14, so that they could be used in that manner. And I guess the other thing is, any other device, we would look at regulating their speed as well, maybe slower speed in regards to their ability to be maneuverable.
And what this does here with regards to speed, it does give us some sense of consistency with the Conservation District, because they are the only agency that either overlaps our jurisdiction or is adjacent to our jurisdiction. So one of the things that we're wanting to make sure that we do is that we do give some reasonable, understandable consistency for the users and for our police department, who has to enforce the regulations if they're enacted as well. And the director of the park district, Dan Jones, is here as well, and in our discussions, he also was a strong proponent of consistency, so that as all of us move forward, we kind of know what we're doing on a good holistic approach. Let's see, what else is there? And then that bottom line there is the, which would be consistent with what the Ride Illinois guidance had, is that those devices that are out of class, the high-speed devices, whether it's the e-motos or a scooter that has the capability to go well more than 10 miles per hour, we would suggest that it would be reasonable to not want to have those on public sidewalks, trails, or the roadway.
And that would be one of those things where I was talking about parental responsibility, and, you know, a parent provides that type of device to their children, and it's used in an unlawful manner, that there would be a provision that they would be held responsible for the use of that device that would be, you know, in either in violation of our municipal code or in violation of the Illinois Vehicle Code, which currently exists in both our municipal code and the vehicle code.
So what you see here is not an ordinance or a regulation that we've drafted at a staff level at this point. These are just highlighted to show areas where we could have consideration for local regulation. So I'd like to open up the floor to the committee, and I'll go back to this slide here, to see your feedback on if there's certain areas of regulation you would like us to look deeper into, or certain areas that you think we should not regulate.
Just a quick question. So the whole, you can't have e-bike on Route 14, is that because of the speed?
Well, it's both. It's because it's a US route, but it's also speed, yes.
Okay. Because I think of like Three Oaks.
Well, and that has a trail aside, you know, on its side, and that wouldn't technically be a sidewalk, it would be a multi-use trail.
Okay.
So, and if we were to draft an ordinance or, you know, craft an ordinance, we could perhaps exempt that out and say you could use an e-bike on that roadway adjacent to perhaps Three Oaks Road, perhaps US Route 14 and Cary-O'Gonquin Road.
And that's part of that educational factor, where, you know, as a former traffic engineer, as a planner, Brian and I know what multi-use paths are, trails are, but to the average user, the differentiation there is harder to grasp. So we need to make sure if we do regulate them differently, that we educate the public on what, where they're at and what their requirements are. It's a challenge, though, to enforce and to educate.
Well, I think that, number one, it's definitely something that we need to address. From a safety issue, number one, we're not looking for someone to get hurt, and I think the concern, and I can just speak as someone walking on the bike paths from time to time where you almost get plowed over, and some of it is just, I don't want to pick on the younger generation, but sometimes they may not know what the rules of the path should be on those type of motorized vehicles. So I'm waiting for someone to get hurt, and I don't, I don't want, I mean, I'm not waiting, but I don't want someone to get hurt, is the point. I think that this is a bit overwhelming, and I think that the biggest thing is the educational component. You know, we have to have buy-in from the park district and from the school district and everyone working in conjunction, otherwise it makes no sense to set up anything unless we're all doing it together. It would kind of like be doing, when we talked about doing mosquito abatement, if we're only going to do them in certain areas, it made no sense to do it. You have to have buy-in from everybody to make it be successful. So I don't have a lot of answers, other than I, I'm looking at all this, and I think we do need to do something, and I think they're becoming more and more prevalent. I would like to know, though, how do you get, if you're in a subdivision, how do you get that e-bike onto one of the trails?
Well, you can ride an e-bike on the roadway.
Okay.
You can operate it on a roadway, and we also have bike lanes in the, on some of the roadways as well, so that's easy, you know, but the only issue with the e-bikes are that that Class III bike can't e-bike, can't be operated by anyone under 16 years of age.
Yeah, I think we've seen a lot more of that.
But to your point, so far, our experience has been that the e-scooter, there have been a couple of instances where we have had injuries related to the use of generally e-scooters, and it's not vehicles striking the e-scooters, it's the e-scooter striking the vehicle. That's happened in two different instances, number one. Number two, when we had our roundtable on Halloween, the instances of, like, high school students using them, they tend to not use them. They have cars, right? So they're using cars, but it tended to be, you know, relegated more to the junior high and elementary schools.
That was, I was going to go with it. There's nobody that's over 18 riding an e-scooter.
Yeah.
It's all younger kids. I think the main objective should be education.
I agree.
Enforcement for the police department is a.
There are so many variables here, yeah.
And you can, you're better off educating somebody instead of finding them or disciplining them about something they actually don't know the rules about. I think we're past the point of outlawing, and that's not going to happen. People will still ride them. Education is probably our best bet and safest way, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think that we need to be outlawing them. The thing that I see, and I'm out in the community all the time, walking on all the different paths, I mean, there are young kids riding these big e-bikes that are flying down paths, they're flying up from behind you, and it is a lot of the junior high kids that are going in the morning to, on the community trail, going that way, and they're flying around the corners, you know, they're in packs. You know, I see these same kids in the middle of the road, you know, jumping the curbs and, you know, for lack of another word, like jaywalking kind of thing, but they're not using the cross. I just think that we need to educate in what the differences, I mean, like Trustee McAlpine said, it's overwhelming looking all these things, and understand, I feel bad for the officers that have to differentiate all the different classifications of vehicles and what, you know, age group and where they're permitted and that. It's a lot, and, you know, I know I've, in the other mayors that I've talked to, this is something that is a problem, and, you know, trying to regulate this is going to be interesting, and then getting the buy-in from the parents is going to be a whole nother thing. I mean, I look at what we went through with those kids on the dirt bikes going on the comm ed trails, it took you guys forever to nail these guys, and then there was no parental supervision or no parental accountability.
And if people don't know, you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
So it's not sometimes that people are trying to do something to break the law, they just don't know what it is.
I think one thing we could do and require, though, is maybe a helmet law, because most injuries are head injuries. Helmets are easy to regu, that part of it's easy to enforce, easier. You see somebody ride by without a helmet, the police can stop them and say, you have to have a helmet.
Well, not.
Which comes in with the education end of this.
Not a complete list, but of the towns that we did research, Schaumburg, Highland Park... Not a complete list, but of the towns that we did research, Schaumburg, Highland Park, Barrington, Ifundur, 17, Deerfield, Glencoe, and Morton Grove, all applied helmet requirements. But the vast majority of the communities did not. And again, like I said...
When you talk to the schools, were they, did they buy into them developing a class along with the police department to educate, or how, how would that work?
I, I don't know that they would, you know, want, look, the schools generally say that they don't have enough time in the school, they, to address the issues that they have to address, let alone something like this.
What about the Park District offering a class that the kids can pay for?
Dan?
But what, yeah. What I also wanted to say is, in the, in the Illinois Vehicle Code, there's a prohibition against municipalities requiring a helmet law for motorcycles. And I know that, yeah, and I think the Ride Illinois, they were kind of, not opposed to it, but they didn't, weren't an advocate of having helmet laws for the bicycles when we were talking, when they were addressing some of the issues that we saw here, number one. But number two, we're not off the hook as a municipality, because we still have to have regulations in effect so that e-scooters can be used. They can only be used if we allow them to be used.
And some of the other educational discussion we had was not, not just, you know, trying to, I won't say push it off on other, other agencies, but education-wise, the conversation did also kind of tie back to what other towns have been doing with driver's license requirements. So not all communities that I surveyed and looked at had driver's license requirements for these different devices or classes of devices. You could see in the state statute, back up here, none of them have a driver's license requirement for e-scooters or for e-bicles. Some communities have done that, though, primarily for the sole reason of if they're going to be used on roadways, and you have younger riders using them, one practical way to give them that education of how to safely do it on the road is to make sure they have a driver's license if they use them. But again, that's why I lead the consistent...
You're talking about 16 and older.
Yes.
Most, 90% of the kids riding scooters and e-bikes are under 16 years old.
Well, I think it's, it's the educational portion. And, you know, when you look at all these graphs and the checks and the Xs and, you know, the different classes and that, I think you need to almost put a visual aid next to it. This is a, a Class 1 bike, this is where it's permitted. This is how old you have to be to ride. Because we have to educate the public, and how are we going to do that? Kerry News Weekly, website, Facebook? I mean, these are things that we have to look at. And it's, we have to be, I want this to be successful, I want it to be enforceable that, you know, the police department has, you know, a leg to stand on, so to speak, that they're, when they're enforcing this, they, they know what exactly they're enforcing, and that the public knows that. We, the parents have to be aware of what the accountability is for this, too. And if we can educate them through slides or through something, so they have a better understanding. Because I see some of these kids on these big bikes, there's no, they should not even be on these bikes. And that's a problem in itself.
What, so can you go back to, what, what regulation do we have now that's enforceable by the police department?
It's the, first off, we have municipal code that addresses bicycles, nothing in regards to e-bikes. But the other issue is that we have the Illinois Vehicle Code. And the Illinois Vehicle Code has regulations as it relates to scooters, and you have to be 18 years or older to use a scooter. But then you have those three classes of e-bike, and it's 16 years older for the Class 3, but the other two didn't require, or there's no age limit on the other two classes of e-bikes.
And right now, how many times have you pulled over somebody on a scooter or e-bike?
To my knowledge, we've had one instance of the, where was it, injury?
Accident.
Yeah, for the, basically electronic or electric motorcycles, where it was a relatively significant accident, but it was a one, you know, one device accident. And then the two instances where the e-scooter struck vehicles. But to my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever stopped anyone, you know, we tend to do that with bicycles, but on a positive standpoint in regards to if they're wearing a helmet, we'll give them some type of, you know, you know, award that was Dr. Stephanie, it's Dr. Stephanie, that she kind of championed as it relates to helmet use.
Attorney Euler has a comment.
So when we talked about this as a group, it is a little bit overwhelming to look at the chart and try to figure out what is or isn't regulated now, what needs to be regulated. It would be helpful, I think, for village staff just to hear from the trustees as to what you believe are the problems. So as opposed to looking at this and saying, okay, what, where are the parameters of legal authority or, or not? Maybe you can identify what the problem is that you believe exists. What do you think we need to address as a safety problem?
Thank you. And let's go back 15 minutes in time and have you say that at the beginning. So, the issue, as I see it, is that, there's, there's 48 different combinations of items there between what you're talking about and where you're talking about it. And it's, if you look it up in the dictionary, it's a regulatory enforcement nightmare. There's nothing you could do. We could sit here and talk all day. The one consistency that Chief has pointed out over and over is speed. And if you're regulating speed on these different areas, it doesn't matter what type of these devices you're using. So that, to me, is the only, that I've heard in this discussion, the only potential enforceable code thing that we could go with is speed. And obviously, the one that's illegal is illegal, and that's an education piece. The second part that I think we need to focus on, is, is, I agree with the mayor, we, we do have to make a concerted effort with our friends at the Park District and the School District to have some sort of joint education. However, the mayor, you just hit on this a minute ago, this is the parent's responsibility. If the parents don't know what they're giving their kids to use, they need to understand. And I don't have an idea off the top of my head of how we do that, or how we partner with our friends here in the other districts to do that. But that's the key. I would guarantee that most of these parents, when they're getting kids these vehicles of whatever type, that's what the kid wants, that's what he said he wants, you buy it for him, you turn him loose. I was going down Main Street at night with a scooter, and I'm checking my speedometer, and he's doing 28 miles an hour down the middle of Main Street at night. Now, he had a reflecting vest on, so that was great. But it is a speed issue. That's the only way that I can see it being a possibility of enforcement. If we work backwards from there, then I think we've got a chance of at least bringing it under control to some degree.
Good point.
So you could talk about what, I'm wanting to hear what we're concerned about, what we think the issues are. I, I agree with the speed. We've got some kid who rides through our neighborhood, that unicycle guy, he's got to be going well over 30 miles an hour. He, he just flies, and I pity him if he ever falls. I wanted to ask, is there any requirement for registration of these things?
No.
So when you talk about education, I mean, I go back to thinking like...
Well, I, I, unless it's the e-motorcycle, that they don't register, but they would have to register. But that hasn't, you know, that was an opinion by the prosecutor as it relates to how that device is used. But other than that, no, they don't have to be registered.
Do, do we require children to register bikes, regular pedal bikes?
No.
So I guess, you know, I, when I was a kid, you registered your bike. You registered it for a different reason, maybe because it got stolen.
Exactly.
But to the point of bringing, if it's about education, and if it's about enforcement primarily through the family, and if you put a requirement for registration, I would assume the police could pull over someone on a scooter or any of these other particular items to find out if, in fact, that unit is registered, and if it's something, yeah. And then if it wasn't registered, you go back kind of like to the parents and say, "Did you have to, do you know that you have to register whatever it is, type of cycle, whatever they're using? And oh, by the way, here's our list of where you can go and when you can't go." So it's, you kind of combine the educational piece with an enforcement piece. Because I, I mean, to me, I think it is, do I want to have our policemen pulling 10-year-olds over on a scooter?
No.
No. But on the other hand, you know, to, to Trusty Walrath's point, somebody going 20 miles an hour down the street, either is it really a dangerous thing for that individual personally, but what if somebody walks out from, you know, in the dark, you can't maybe see them, right? And they walk into the street and gets whacked by somebody going 28 miles an hour on a scooter? It's probably as close to being as bad as with a car. So I, I don't know, I think if there's any merit to considering some registration of these things, maybe that's a component to think about or look into, to ask some of the other suburbs if they have that.
I have not seen that in my research so far, but it's something we can look into. I'm also just hearing the, the theme of speed. It, it sounds like the bigger concern of people who spoke so far are the devices that are going well over 28 miles an hour. So those are the ones that are, even with the regu, even with the other regulations on low, the ones that are defined as low-speed electric scooters or Class 2 and Class 1 bicycles, those aren't the ones that are doing those speeds. It sounds like those are the e-motos and the other high-speed scooters, are those what we're hearing more of the concern with, or all?
I, I don't care which classified it is. I think that what you've got here is a very good start. And we, I'd want to see what the ordinance looks like here. I would also ask the group for an opinion, I have mine, on Route 14 notwithstanding, of regular bicycles on sidewalks. Do we think that's appropriate on side streets, on your residential streets? Or do you think bicycles only belong in the street?
Boy, oh, boy.
We, well, currently, bicycles can be ridden on sidewalks, except for the business district.
I understand.
Okay.
Well, I just, I think you get into, I don't want to over-regulate either. And, you know, when little kids are learning to ride a bike, I'm not going to have them ride in this, learn how to ride in the street with training wheels. They need to learn on the sidewalk, it's a little bit safer. But I do think we need to come up with something. My thought would be, you know, perhaps if you can bring something back to us of, I think you mentioned Rolling Meadows or some of the other places that have had some, some ordinances, something set into place that has been successful, you know, maybe we can build upon it. We have a starting point, because again, looking at this, it, it can be a, a little bit daunting. So I think, looking at someone that has a program, and then we tweak it, again, taking all those things into, into account. But speed is the big thing. And why is it speed? Because we're worried about also people walking. I'm, I'm, I don't like walking necessarily when that happens, but I'm more worried about what happens if a mom has a stroller with a kid in it, and someone comes plowing over and it knocks that over. Again, I'm not saying there's intention to do that, but I think that there needs to be something in place so that we're trying to address, that we know that's a potential issue, and we're, we're trying to, trying to minimize any type of injuries that could happen, any safety concerns.
I, I will add, and this is more my opinion, I think, than anything, but there really, in my opinion, isn't a good role model example of an ordinance that's worked well. The wide inconsistencies that I showed and that the newspaper and the media have shown, I think speaks to that. And I think that also speaks to probably the, maybe the, the need potentially for more of a broader regulation, maybe at a state level, perhaps. And I understand that some of our state legislatures are seeking to relook at, revisit this at future sessions. But, but we, we will definitely look at the other examples to kind of maybe refine what we're showing here, as we give you a proposed example later. And we're going to communicate our, our draft ideas with the other agencies that we've coordinated with before we bring it back to you as well. But yeah, I just want to highlight that, yeah, there, unfortunately, I don't, the chief can chime in, too, I don't think there's another town or towns I can look at and say, "That's the one we should model after that's worked well, because they're all so different."
Yeah, they're, they're different, and they're overlapping in regards to the Illinois Vehicle Code. And what you'll see is that they just enacted on an ordinance level what was contained in the Illinois Vehicle Code. So, you know, I, I think that what we want to do is we want to address something so that it's, you know, outside the Illinois, the Illinois Vehicle Code, but it's applicable to all those overlapping, you know, governing bodies, so that it's consistent. And, you know, the other thing was, the fire department indicating that, you know, these lithium batteries can ignite, and that the School District didn't realize that they're parked against their building. So to get them away from the building made a lot of sense, but they also offered a conduit to get information out to their, you know, the parents of the students as well.
Right. I mean, every, every school district has educational opportunities, just as well as, you know, they're going to send out newsletters. Again, all we can do is present the information, we can't make people read it. So, and I, I think that Trusty Walworth is correct in the sense that, correct if he's wrong, but I don't know how much you're going to regulate it if it's not under the speed. I don't know how you, as, as trying to enforce something, are going to go around and, and try and figure out what, what type of bike it is.
And I'll tell you, you know, to, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
To, you know, to address the issues here, is, I don't believe that our police officers are going to be looking for this. It's generally in response to a complaint, very much like we enforce the parking over sidewalks and things of that nature. It's more important than the summer than it is the winter, because people aren't walking on the sidewalks in the winter.
One final comment about it. There was some discussion about the helmet piece and what you can and can't do. Don't need an answer now, but if there's any ability to, to try to regulate use of a helmet for certain age groups, younger than a certain age, you know, if there's no restrictions legally, I think we should look at that, too.
That sounds good.
Just a couple of quick things.
Sure.
I, I know we've sort of beaten it to death at this point, or, or identified that it's, there are more questions than answers. But on these multi-use paths, that we've been talking about, where these, these vehicles are allowed, I know that's sort of a tight area. Is there any opportunity whatsoever for any sort of striping there to say, you know, "Hey, individual with a stroller, you're on this side, and any e-bike would have to use this lane"? Just a quick thought, you know, if, if we're, you know, if enforcement is difficult, encouraging at least, like, "Stay on this side, like, do your thing over here." I agree, speed is going to be the number one way of identifying this. If we did have to get into a little bit more of a granular identification thing of the different classes, I know I, we had the slide where it's just a tiny sticker in an inconvenient location. My mind sort of went to our friends over in Trought Valley that have the, the triangle sticker on their bumper sticker. Is there an opportunity, if we had some sort of colored stickering situation, where like, "Hey, your blue sticker, like, you're required to put this on the front, on your, on your forks or whatever. You got a blue one, that you're, you're this class. You got a yellow one, you're this class." Not that, that may not be the direction that we're going in, in terms of identifying the class and then enforcement from there, but if we absolutely had to, maybe there's some sort of stickering thing where we can provide these stickers. And if you don't have a sticker, the police officers on duty have some in their car, and if, if you get stopped for flying someplace and you don't have one, "Hey, I got a yellow sticker for you, buddy," you know.
If, if you go on Amazon, they sell stickers so that you can make a Class 3 e-bike, a Class 1 e-bike.
Of course. There's, there's an answer to every brilliant idea.
I still like Rick's idea with registration and education together, and speed is speed. You're going to get them with their speed going 30 miles an hour.
Yeah, I'm intrigued about the registration piece, because that could collate with...
To get a registration, you'd need your education class.
You need education.
And then the parents have to sign on it.
Sign off on it, yeah. Yeah, I don't want to, we, we don't want to be the fun suckers here. We just want to make sure that everybody's safe, because, you know, we witness what's going on. We've heard what's going on. And we just want to make sure that everybody is safe when they're traveling on all the different roads or paths or sidewalks or whatever. And just make it so it's, it's easy to understand, and that we know what we're working with. So I think you've got a big task.
We say good luck. We say good luck, Eric.
We're going to come back with a graph of 30 colors now.
So I guess, what you'd like to see from us, then, is a proposed ordinance, maybe next time around, that would have some provisions as it relates to registration, perhaps something in regards to helmets, although, you know, I think that that's a parental thing, but that's just between you and me. So, but yeah, we'll address that.
Chief, one, one, one final thing. When I was much younger, I took motorcycle training class at the junior colleges. I just would wonder if that might even be something that you might want to offer, like a, a riding class, so to speak, that the kids could go to, to learn something about these things. I, I would, I would bet a lot of them aren't, aren't even recognizing the fact that the thing could start on fire. I mean, just educate them about the actual piece that the parents likely bought for them, because they're all too young probably to buy their own, their own vehicle. So I don't know, I, kind of with the education, you do something at, at the school and have a riding course. I, I don't know, maybe that'd be a good idea.
Well, yeah, and I would say that there used to be a, a program called Safety Town. And they had, you know, the stop signs and things like that. But again... Town, and they had, you know, the stop signs and things like that, but again, that's kind of fallen off to the wayside, you know, just in regards to the way I think society's moved along, number one.
That's a great idea until something happens, and it's not such a great idea, so...
Okay, I think you've got your marching orders for now. We have nothing else on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Come up to the microphone, please.
Dale, trying to get people to enforce the helmet, you, you see the parents with the kids, okay, the kids have the helmets on, but the parents don't. So I mean, what's going to, how are you going to determine that? There's three girls that live across the street from me, none of them wear helmets, so I mean, it's, I mean, how are you going to justify that? So that's going to be a big challenge there, so...
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at eight fourteen.